All right. Thank you, Matt, and welcome to our audience here in person and online. My name is Mayor Mike Peterson. This is the City of Cottonwood Heights. It's our business meeting for Tuesday, October 5th, 2021. It's just after seven o'clock. And we will, I think, excuse Councilor Michael, who is traveling and is out of town. She did join us earlier in our work session. We appreciate that. We'll begin this meeting with a pledge of allegiance by our city manager, Tim Tingey. Thank you, Tim. Appreciate that. The next item on our agenda is citizen comments. This is not the public hearing regarding the proposed budget amendment, but this is the time for citizen comments. I don't have any comment cards up here. So is there anyone who would like to provide citizen comments? Tim, what's his name? The Creep Halbeck. And I can say creep because that's what's on the back of his jacket. Is your microphone on? Push, push the green button right there.
One, two, three. Oh, there you go. There you go. Technology. Yeah. I'm old, not as old as the mayor, but you know, I mean, we were both in the school.
Nobody in this room is, so.
We were both in the school in the sixties and seventies, right? I was in school in nineteen sixties and seventies, so just saying. Anyway, okay, there you go. This is my mayor's old joke. I have just one comment, and that's from this past weekend on Sunday when we had the power outage. I would really have liked to seen a lot of police enforcement and police presence at the different intersections while all the... The thing was out probably forty-five minutes. In my neighborhood, it was out for almost an hour.
Yeah.
But everything else, and I sorry, would just like to say, can we, can we look at that? And we can say, when something like this happens, can we put more police presence out there to do the traffic things? I mean, I personally parked my motorcycle with the creeps, yeah, on Highland.
It's parked right out here.
No, no, yeah, that one on Highland at Port Union, and I sat there for forty-five minutes and just went like this because people were angry. People were, there was fingers going all over the place. There was honking going on. I was like, right, if this is what, this is something that happens, can we keep it down? And I think if we had more police presence, that would have been a better situation.
No, good reminder. I was traveling and it was a challenge getting through some intersections. So appreciate the reminder, yeah.
Yeah, that's it. Sorry.
All right. Thank you, Tim. Appreciate it. Anyone else who would like to provide a public comment to the council?
Here. Good, Tim. There, there is. Van Walker submitted an item that I want to include as part of the public comment. She submitted it, and so for the record, it will be in the meeting minutes and also as part of the record, and I will forward it to the council.
All right, encourage the council to take a look at that. Thank you. All right, we will close the citizen comment period. Now we'll move to item four point zero, which is a public hearing, which means public comment regarding the proposed budget amendment for 2021 and 2022 fiscal year. So Scott, are you doing that quickly? I know we've been through it a few times. We'll let you walk through it again for the council and the audience.
Yes, Mayor, I'll be presenting that one. Okay, so the, this has been gone over several other meetings, but also I'll go over it kind of quick. So the first area here that's kind of highlighted in this very light yellow, whatever color seems to be on the different monitors, directly relates to our first receipt of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. We received $2,002,000. That's how I didn't, can't quite get it right there in that middle column. The expense, the first amount, number one here is a transfer to our stormwater fund to do some stormwater projects, $1.2 million. Then there's some single audit cost, single audits or audits required when you exceed a certain level of federal funding of which this plus the CARES Act push us beyond that. And so we need to do it for last year and for this year. And that's an estimate for those two years. There will be an additional amount that will come in future years likely on that. There's thirty thousand for personal protective equipment. If the need arises for additional equipment, two hundred thousand for a small business economic assistance program, eight thousand for the Utah League of Cities and Towns Technical Assistance. The total amount is estimated at sixteen thousand, four thousand a year, estimated for about a four-year period on that. But this is to fund the first two years of that. The, our badge and automatic door system, we want to expand that. Our current system isn't expandable, so that this is the update and allow for that and add some more automatic doors, which will also improve our ADA compliance. The Cottonwood Heights Recreation Service Area, they qualify for a revenue reduction reimbursement, just under $400,000 there. Yes.
Sorry, a question on that. Weren't we going to do that over two years?
Tim.
On the reimbursement to rec center?
Uh, we don't have to. I mean, it can be part of this. We're doing the expenses and revenues in this over two years, but this can be a one-time, or if you want to do it over two years, that's fine.
I just thought it was over two years, but I maybe I misunderstood. So that's fine. Go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, and all these are funds that we've already received, so we wouldn't be paying money out prior to the receipt of funds. And it doesn't come out of our existing fund balance numbers or anything along those lines. It comes out of other funds, so. Fifty-nine hundred dollars of the request from UFA would qualify for American Rescue Plan Act funds. The remaining amount of $65,000 could be covered out of some funds that we already have budgeted that we talked about. And that, and that equals our $2,200, $2,200,000 that we've received in July from the American Rescue Plan Act. There are fifty-eight hundred eighty-six dollars of Wasatch Front Waste and Recycling District requests for COVID leave and PPE items that were prior to the allowable period of time for that, those expenditures, so it wouldn't qualify for the ARP funds. The community survey that will help to prepare for the upcoming budget, that will be done sometime over the winter time, likely $16,000. Transfer capital, transfer to capital improvements for potential open space funding. And then police wage market adjustment. The total estimated annual cost of this is 484,000. Since this is going to be implemented at a partial period, this is actually for three quarters of a year. That would be $363,000 for that. And that target implementation would actually be retroactive to the beginning of the pay period that we're in. Moving to the stormwater fund, the revenue coming in here. These items that are outlined in revenue, these are, this is the transfer in that's coming in from the general fund that adds up to the $1,220,000. You can see that total right down here. We have some items that are already budgeted and some items in there that would qualify. And then we need to add in order to have complete. So for instance, in the existing storm drain system, critical investigation, the total cost estimated is 825,000. We have 307,000. So we need to budget the remaining 517,000 that is allowed needed for that project. Timberline and Quicksilver Silver, we have 101,000 budgeted. It's estimated at 173, so this would add 71,000 to complete that. Alta Hills Drive Stormwater Replacement Cost is 194. This one, nothing is budgeted now, so the full amount is recommended to be budgeted. And then the Keswick Road Replacement Total Cost is 856, but we kind of use this as our stopgap so that we didn't go over our $2,200,000 of revenue. So we were budgeting that at 28,000 to get whatever we can get done on that. It might just be, you know, some basic estimates and engineering or something along those lines. And then the remaining 828,000, we would recommend to be budgeted when we receive the second distribution of the ARP funds. Capital Improvements Fund. We would need to rebudget some of the items that carried over that didn't get completed. And the net of all that is 3,385,000 and change in expense, 657,000, almost 58,000 in revenue for a net of 2,727,000. And that's just re-budget of items that didn't get finished in the prior years, and we need to carry forward. The trip hazard sometime, somehow during our budgeting process, we omitted budgeting this trip hazard, and this is something that we're contractually required to use. We do have fund balance in the Capital Improvements Fund where we can cover that. The item number three is the open space funding that is offset by the transfer in from the general fund to cover that potential item there. And item number four is additional Ferguson Park funding. And this would be utilizing some fund balance there of 150,000 from that. And so anyhow, that's, that's the extent of our budget, recommended budget.
Okay, quick comment. One, maybe you could share with us again, which I asked in the work session, because I want to compliment the council and staff over the last three years because it was projected three years ago, but at this time or even this last budget cycle, we would be having another tax increase because of our declining revenues and increasing expenses. And we did do a tax increase, you know, three years ago, and we expected we'd be doing one this year, but actually just the opposite. Our balances are healthier. So maybe you could share with us again, what is our unobligated fund balance after these transfers?
Okay, so after these transfers and also estimating a 750,000 under expend, we would have 5,304,000. So we would be, from a budgeted perspective, we would be about four and a half, four to 4.6 million dollars of unobligated, or you know, expendable fund balance. But with our under expend that we likely, you know, see based on history and what have you, we'll probably be closer to 5.3 million.
Which, again, my compliments to the council and staff for, especially some of us leave office of having a healthy budget going forward. And also I do remember now on the 400,000 reimbursement to the service area, it is one year, and I think we have a commitment from them that this will go to open space improvements, not for salaries and operations, is our understanding, yeah.
I don't know if we can take credit for American Rescue Plan money. That kind of came as a bonus.
Well, but I think how we use that, even, even without that, we've put most of that into specific projects and we spend it and budget it. So even outside that, we've got that four point some million.
Yeah, sales taxes came in really high, which was definitely a benefit to us. We did hold expenditures down for a good period of time while we were worried about what the revenues would do. And then both the CARES funds and the American Rescue Plan funds have helped. The care, the American Rescue Plans don't really go directly to our fund balance. It just allows us to do a lot more things that we probably wouldn't have done without. The CARES Plan actually did have a very direct benefit to our general fund.
Yeah, it allows us to take some things and save that general fund. But then also too, that first budget cycle, I know we went through every nook and cranny to look for discretionary funds. So it's a combination of all those things.
And we could thank the public for shopping their way through the pandemic.
Yeah, you're right. Good points. Stay vacations. Yep. No, I, but again, considering where we could have been, I'm still just think it takes a collaboration of everyone, you know, federal assistance or constituents, staff, council, everyone being involved. So appreciate that. Any, any questions, comments to Scott or Tim regarding this item before we to open it up to the public? You'll have an opportunity again later as well.
Scott, I've got a quick question. What, have we been able to verify what online shopping has brought into our city? Or is that something that's also protected?
Let me look. I just actually sent something. If I can pull this up. I won't probably share it, but I'll be able to quote a little bit from it. I just sent some information out. So our non-store retailers, so in 2020, this is, this is the calendar year because it's easier for me to summarize it by calendar year. So in 2020, it represented 11% of our taxable sales within the city. So from January through July in 2021, it represents 12%. And to put into perspective, there's only two items that are higher than that. One of those is, is retail food and beverage stores, and the other is retail general merchandise stores. And so when you look at, at those and in the prior year, one was 15%, one was 16%. And in the current year, it's 14% and 13%. So as you look at that, you know, there, and I, and I know I'm not displaying it out here, but as you look at just kind of those, those concepts, it is growing and replacing some of the other, you know, things. We're getting a little bit more diversified, which is a good thing in terms of where the revenues are coming from, from a sales tax perspective, so.
Yeah, and we lost a grocery store during that time as well, which is always a major impact.
Yes.
But no, it's, it's, it's a good report overall, considering where we, we thought we would be. And then that's just good news, but we still have a responsibility to be efficient as, as we go forward, so. I'd like to thank you, Scott. Thank you, Tim. And we now will open up the public hearing regarding the proposed budget amendment for 2021 dash 2022 fiscal year. Anybody from the audience who would like to comment regarding these budget adjustments? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and we will move to our staff quarterly reports. And we're honored to have with us tonight Sergeant Dan Mosoleskely, a resident of Cottonwood Heights as well. And he'll provide us the staff police quarterly report.
First and foremost, we should start with the baseball game update. It's three to nothing for the Red Sox.
I don't, I don't like that. Being a Yankee fan, I We can, we can, we can switch with you guys. That. All right, Dan, why don't we excuse you for a moment and let's move to our public work report with that ship.
Oh, was it the Yankees comment? Is that?
Now, after I say that, let me see if I can find it.
So hopefully you can share it. Hopefully you can share it.
Okay, mayor and council, thank you for this moment to be in front of you. Give you an update on what's happening in the Public Works Department. This is mainly an engineering report to give you an update on the projects that are occurring throughout the city. I know that a lot of you get phone calls. We're doing a lot of, a lot of work tearing things up and kind of making a mess out there right now. And we're trying to wrap things up as we come into the winter season. So here we go. We'll just kind of if we run through them. These are some things we'll talk about on the capital project updates. Give you a little bit on the roundabout Ferguson Canyon Park, the striping. I can cover the striping right now. Just FYI, we did bid that one out, but we had to cancel it. There is no, the paint and the glass beads are hard to find right now. They're about six months out on order and we can't hold bids that long. So we, we canceled that bid and one that we had been approved. I mean, that we had gone out for just FYI. So we, we won't be striping until spring next year. I'll give you a little update on twenty-six hundred east, seventeen hundred east. The wine sap Alpen Way and then what's happening with the bidding. So on the roundabout, the project has gone out the bid. It went out a bid last week and it is due to open here in two weeks. So we'll have an, we'll know where we are. And based on that, we are still on schedule. And some questions have come up about the schedule. We hear about them. The contract is, I believe, for December through September, May, June, yeah, through September. Doesn't mean they'll be working through the winter. It's just gives them the ability to come in and do some work on the side of the roads, prep, move some utilities and do things of that nature. The real work will begin really in May, towards the end of the school year and try to get as much done as we can through the summer. So like I said, we are on schedule for that on the roundabout Ferguson Canyon Park. Tonight, I believe you're going to be voting for a contract for the construction of that. We talked a little bit about it in the work session. Couple of things I wanted to cover here tonight, mostly for the public. I believe you already understand this is that this park that we're getting ready to do is going to be built in two sections. There is the actual physical park itself, which, what you're seeing here to right now. And that portion is being funded by city funds and other things that we've discussed. You as a council have funded that project. The second portion of that project, if we can go along, is the is the parking lot. That is an actual federal aid project, if you'll recall. We have a different funding source there. Because if it's a different funding source, these projects are going to be built at different times and they cannot be built with the same contractor, under the same contract. So we're, there's a federal process, a federal and a UDOT process that takes a lot longer than the city. So we're getting the park going and started so it can, we can get it planted, get some of this material growing before we actually get it opened up at the same time and while we'll be working on the parking lot. So just FYI, it's going to seem a little odd that we're building that without the parking lot at the same time. But if you're asked, you can let them know. These are two different, very distinct projects. And we have to keep a line of demarcation on those. The twenty-six hundred east sidewalk, it's under design. This is up off Tony Circle over by the the junior high and the rec center going down twenty-six hundred east. Seventeen hundred east has been, we've talked about it quite a bit. It is now under design. We approved that contract. So that's moving forward. The survey is being completed. And as soon as we have something laid out, we will, we will get moving forward hot and heavy on that and give you some numbers so that you can start making some decisions. As you recall, we also are putting in for funding to help offset the construction cost with the the state tap money. We, we talked about it at the last city council meeting. This is a big one going on. This is the wine sap area, the reconstruction. If you've gone out there, these roads that are in red are actually, this area is actually being reconstructed. The asphalt's coming off. We are doing some curb and gutter, waterways and new ADA ramps. Whenever you reconstruct a neighborhood or a road, there is an ADA ramp or an ADA accessibility. We're required to put in new ones and or, and or upgrade the existing ramps. There has been some questions that have come up on this particular type of project. I know I've received calls from, from residents and I've received, there's been some inquiries from a couple of council as well. Just to make some things, just to clear things up once again for the public. The curb and gutter that is being replaced is curb and gutter that is actually sagged and it is in pretty bad condition as far as drainage. And when we reconstruct the road, it doesn't obviously do us any good to reconstruct the road and leave the curb in a sagging position. So we go ahead and repair that during construction. There are some portions of the curb and gutter that are unsightly. Yet they still flow. There are some sections of drive approaches that are a little unsightly, but the curb in front of it still flows. So we aren't touching those. We're, we're, we're getting the worst that we can get to. And the reason we're doing that is we do have a limited budget. While the council has been very generous in allotting the budget every year so far on the five-year plan, there's still a limited amount. And to do a curb and gutter project in a neighborhood such as this of this size would be close to four hundred thousand dollars of the three hundred and ninety thousand dollars that we really allotted to go in and do this construction. So we're trying to be, spread the money out as much as we can. And when we do receive calls, we are referencing the city ordinance that requires homeowners to repair and maintain the curb gutter and sidewalk in front of their homes. It's not as easy as just picking up and moving around to different locations either. So I wanted to share that with you and mostly get it out as well and to the public that this is why we're picking and choosing sections of curb and gutter to repair. It, it, not that we don't believe that we could probably replace it all. We just don't have those kind of funds and we're, we're trying to make those funds stretch out through the whole city. So giving you an idea, this is wine sap. They are milling it off as you can see. Just want to give you an idea of what's happening out there. It's about five inches deep of old asphalt coming out. These are some, these are some areas where the new curb and gutter is going. And you can see in this picture where this area was actually had some real problems going on. And if we didn't repair that, then we, we're still left with a hole that in the, that would allow drainage into the road. A little light, just bringing this forward to you to show you what's happening and show you the conditions of that. The other road we are working on and we're just starting.
Can I ask you just, yeah, quick on something like that? Would they be eligible to get included in the fifty-fifty program at the same time, under the same contractor? Would they have to be handled just completely differently?
We are, we are not encouraging nor discouraging the contractor to work with residents. I have had a call, actually had a call today about that. Or an email, I should say. If, if a resident wants to do that, they can apply for the fifty-fifty and we've informed them of that. And they can work directly with the contractor. The issue on something like this though, is the contractor has a deadline and a timeframe if they can fit it in. But I do require that the contractors show that they have an actual agreement with the resident that discusses payment from the resident and that it's not going to impact the project itself. But yes, it's happened. They've, they did it in a couple of, actually up in here. A resident went out and dug up their sidewalk and formed it up. And while they were there, he, he paid them to come pour that little section of sidewalk. It wasn't part of the fifty-fifty. He just went out and did it and they had some extra mud on the truck and he talked to them and they went ahead and did that. So yes, that is an option and we've been sharing that. The other road that we will be start, will have started is Alpen Way. That will be the same project type as the one we're working on now in the wine sap area. Curb gutter. No sidewalk and there are some drive approaches and the drive approaches are being replaced because the curb and gutter in front of it. Once again, the waterways, ADA ramps, and we should begin paving on that in the next two weeks. So those are things that are happening around town. To give you an update, we're prepping and getting ourselves ready for the winter. We, we know it's coming. We're starting to feel it a little bit right now and it would be, I hate to say it would be nice if it was a little drier for another three weeks because I'd like to finish these, but we'll get them done. It's just going to put us behind a little if we get, get a little bit of moisture. But it is nice to see the moisture starting out there and getting to that point. So we're prepping for those for the winter. Any questions on what's happening?
Matt, I do have a question. Traditionally, how late do the plants stay open for that asphalt? Do you ever get caught in a bad situation when you've taken down a road all the way down to the base?
And the weather. I have been, but I have been. Yeah, been caught. Traditionally, well, plants, if, if, if the weather's okay, plants will stay open. They won't close, but traditionally they'll, they'll shut down about mid-November. You'll see that. Really, you want forty, about forty-two to forty-five degrees ambient and rising before you start paving. It has to do with obviously the, the cooling, the quickness of the cooling on the surface and the underneath. Not to get into an asphalt lesson. I know you guys are excited about that. But yeah, so about November is when we'll see them close down. But you can push it in to November, depending on the weather and the plant itself.
Okay, two additional questions, Matt. I know a few years back, we approved a five-year road maintenance and upkeep plan. Is this the third or the fourth year?
Okay, I thank you for reminding.
Maybe you're moving ahead. Maybe I, I jumped ahead.
No, you didn't jump ahead. I'm actually going back on this. So that's a good question. You reminded me. I wanted to talk about this minute. These projects are in the third year. We are starting the fourth year. So to bring you up to date, we just put a bid out, a public bid for year four. So that's the slurry, the crack sealing and re, and chip sealing and reconstruction projects. So that just went out this week. And in two weeks, we'll be opening that and you'll be seeing that come before you as well. Those projects themselves though, won't start until spring of next year.
You'll be coming back to the council probably within a year for the next five-year plan or?
And no, the end of the last, I believe it's the last meeting in November. I can't recall. We're going to bring a plan to you for review. So our plan is to get something to you at the end of November. Excellent. For the next five years.
Matt, on the seventeenth east sidewalk, is there a chance for that next year? Is that the plan? Or not? Is that?
The plan on seventeenth east, if you'll recall, we council directed us to put in an application for the state transportation alternative money, which is a supplement which will, we have to be ready for construction next year. So we, if we can get those funds and with the funds we have allotted, we think we can move forward next year and construct seventeenth east. We'll have this ready for, we'll have it ready to go out the bid in January. So like I said, and we should know by then if we have those extra funds. But that's going to be a council decision if you want to move forward. Right now you've approved us to design. Figure out the property and bring back a cost estimate to you for the actual construction. I haven't received approval yet to move forward with the construction.
One other question. At Dog Legs, it looks like to the west. Where does that terminate there?
Where are we? Oh, here?
Yes, yeah.
This is on seventy-two, yeah, seventy-two hundred. There's a section of sidewalk right here that's missing. There, I mean, yeah, sidewalk, there's sidewalk here and then there's one more section missing right here. So we're trying to stretch it if we can to connect the remainder of the sidewalk on that portion of seventy-two hundred. That isn't actual part of the seventeenth, but if we're going to get the sidewalk to that point and have the ADA ramp with the school crossing there, we felt like we should maybe stretch it a little bit further if we can pull that off. We still have, once again, if you'll recall, we've got property in here. We need to determine what and where we need to place it. So.
Great. Thanks for that clarification. Appreciate it.
And a follow-up comment for me. When you talked about the Ferguson Park.
Yes, sir.
Just maybe a, a suggestion, and I think it'll happen automatically, but just for the record. With our discussion in tonight's work session regarding the Ferguson Canyon trailhead and the wayfinding questions and proposals there. I would just encourage you to work with Mike Johnson and staff to see if somehow there's a close collaboration of that trailhead signage along with this park signage, because I think the whole purpose of these two is to kind of connect them. So.
Are we talking about the track? Wayfinding signs or part of, oh, the other thing discussed.
We, we looked at some signage when we looked at this park design. And tonight, the PTOs committee, Parks, Field and Open Space Committee, recommended a high priority for them was redo wayfinding at the Ferguson Park Trailhead. And I, there's nothing allocated yet for that wayfinding at the trailhead. But I think it's important that these not be done totally independently. So some cross fertilization of thoughts and ideas so that the appearance and aesthetics are similar and are connected. So I just a thought.
No, we are actually, we are working close with Mr. Johnson on this and making sure because one of the, if you'll recall, the PTOs actually recommended the type of design that we saw at this main entrance as well as one of the trailhead signs that points the way up the sidewalk. So we are working closely with them and we'll make sure.
Thank you. Again, they presented to us tonight, a priority would be the higher end up there. Yeah. All right, any? Anything else, Matt?
I'm, I'm good if you don't have.
Further questions, comments? Thank you. Good luck with snow removal.
Yeah, we'll see if the police know what they're doing at this point.
Oh, you here?
Oh, oh, you mean regarding?
Please don't for the Red Sox to.
All right, our police report by Sergeant Dan Mosolesky.
So if I push your screen, it will work. All right, so the third quarter statistics for the police department. Let me check away in that email. Yeah, September statistical report.
You may want to be able to enlarge that so we can see it. Go on a
All right. Glad Matt doesn't know how to do it. I don't feel so bad. First foremost, the calls for service for, for the last three months. You can see the calls for service trend down a little bit over the last three months, given our guys a little bit opportunity to go do some more on-view work. Skill from eighteen hundred down to sixteen hundred and fifty. But the on-views going from two thirty to seven hundred or three hundred and seventy-six. So I think the guys like that gives an opportunity to, to go do a little bit of that on-view stuff. Here's the response time for September. Priority one, average response or average dispatch time is two and a half minutes. Travel time is four and a half minutes. So just over. Travel time is four and a half minutes, so just over eight seconds, over seven minutes for average total response time for priority one. Same seven minutes, eight seconds for priority two and a little over eleven minutes for priority three. Here's the, the trend for the last six months in our response times. You see priority ones are all hovering around that six and a half to seven minutes. Same with, same with priority two. Eight, eight minutes, seven minutes right in that area. And then the priority three stuff is anywhere from thirteen minutes, fourteen minutes. And then kind of a little low right now at eleven minutes. The UCR crime report for the, for last year's compared to this year. All the numbers are down minus one burglary, seven burglaries is compared to six thefts are down significantly. Stolen vehicles are down significantly and a total down from one oh two to seventy-eight. So a pretty good month for September compared to last year. Here's our arrests for the last three months. You can see seventy-three, seventy-seven and sixty-five adult arrests and juvenile arrests, five, ten and eight. Our traffic citations again, a big increase for the quarter started at a hundred and thirty-two citations in July up to two hundred and sixty-three citations in September. And warnings trended the same way, started at seventy-eight and, and went up to a hundred and thirty-nine. And DUIs were nine and then we did sixteen in August. I think Officer Comer and four were going at each other, trying to get as many DUIs as they can. So we probably see a big bump there and then back to eight in September.
And before you go on to the next slide, we go back on the traffic citation. So there's a big increase.
Yeah, I just noted that. I was going to ask that question.
Well, part of that is we we're attributing a lot of that to Nantucket enforcement and other selective enforcement areas where we've had complaints in the city, correct?
Yeah, obviously anytime somebody calls and complains, we want to make sure we're responding to that area.
That was the high school opening then? I know I've got several calls on Nantucket.
It is, and we've had them as well. And there are a couple of other places in the city. So we've increased enforcement. That's the number you're seeing there.
But again, I appreciate, I guess it's the, the second item and that's the warnings. I think it has often sometimes equal amount of impact as a citation, so.
Yeah.
Aaron, if you notice as the one goes up, so is the other, so their proportion.
And, and the enforcement is there, which is the most important part. Accidents are down a little bit, small, small number of accidents down, but we like seeing any, any decrease in our accidents. Here's the three months in review. Calls for service in July, eighteen thirty, down to sixteen fifty in September. You guys can read all the numbers there, but I think it was a good three months for the police department. The animal control guys are always busy. Those, those two guys are amazing. So this is, it's a lot of work that they put in and I, I appreciate them. So you can see sixty, sixty calls for service for the animal control guys. Well, sixty animal control calls, forty-nine code enforcement calls, thirty-eight traffic enforcement calls. And so a hundred and forty-seven total calls for service. So traffic enforcement is again primarily parking enforcement and stuff like that for those guys. And then the citations issued fifteen total citations from the animal control code enforcement guys. So this time of year especially, we're getting lots of calls and complaints around the high school here. So Butler Hills and on seventy-eight in that area. So this is probably the, the biggest area they're hitting this time of year. So then two attended deaths and one attended death for the month of September. And then just a couple of highlights for the last, for the last three months. We had our awards banquet, which, you know, I think is an excellent event and whoever puts that on should be commended for his service. The marathon, Ridgecrest Fun Run and the Fourth of July Parades. Oh, it was me that put that on, but that's okay. And then obviously our safety message for the month, it being Halloween, so everybody be aware of, of all the little kids out there, trick or treating. We all want to have fun, but we need to be safe with those kids out there. Drive extra safe. Make sure you see them out there. About it. Questions I can answer?
Yeah, I, I have an immediate question. One reason I've always supported having our own police department was be able to customize things and be able to move resources where needed based upon statistics. And one example is Nantucket and with the number of communications I've had this week. So I appreciate to hear that we've adapted to that. In previous reports, I think we've had a, I wouldn't say a heat map, but a what we call it, a map showing where the calls for service are happening within our city. Are we doing that anymore? No, I know.
You know, I know exactly what you're talking about, Mayor, and it dropped off at some point, but it'll be in next month's for sure.
Yeah, I think it's valuable to have for the community and for us to see where we're focusing our resources. I know that I had training on that years ago and I think it's very helpful.
Yeah, that's very easy for us to generate. So.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I know, I know we see down a target area. I know we have a lot there and you'll see things.
Well, it's because we have all the business area down there.
Talking about. But I, I'd appreciate that being back and report. I think that's very helpful to see at a glance where, where things are happening. So, yeah.
Dan, I have a quick question. I know that VEC has been something we've been trying to work on. I think your response times when you get the call are incredibly quick. I keep hearing wonderful results. Is VEC going to get any better and quicker? I had an instance where I had to call them and it took me a little bit longer than I'd like to, to get my message through. Is, is there any? Any other? How can I say this nicely? Is there any way to get them to quicken that up a little bit?
Well, we can talk to Tim about that. He represents us on their board.
Go ahead, Tim. I'm happy to talk about that. I've included the meetings that we've had with Beck about this. Every month we are reviewing that. They are making progress. That's good with some of the changes that they made with the phone systems. It, it's improving things. They do need to continue to improve. And that's something that we emphasize at the board level every month. But I, I do see it getting better just because of, of some of those things. They did make some changes and I, I included this in some of the council communications, some changes that impact just the non-nine-one-one calls that impact our customer service, which is very concerning for us and we've expressed that. But I, I do see the times improving and hopefully they will continue to do that.
How, how is the transfer between Beck and Salt Lake's when something happens to land in the wrong space? Is that going well? Is it seamless yet or? Have you asked that?
I, I might be able to help you with that. With both of them being versed from agencies now, it's pretty much seamless. That's not really the issue, but it's been referred to as a lot to do with a policy change and a new phone, phone system.
But yeah, and we, and we kind of got hit on that because Sandy was there and we were here and we're close to cell phones and all that stuff. So if it's mostly seamless, that's really, really good news.
It's a single platform. It does appear on, on the screen. You know, so it's not hard to transfer anymore.
For a nine-one-one call take or maybe in Salt Lake, but they can put it to the dispatcher back very easily.
Right. And, and the nine-one-one calls, the response time and the answer time and whether you're ninety seconds or something, I think is their target. You know, it's actually lower than that, but nevertheless, it's, uh, it's increased and they, they're doing a good job with nine-one-one calls. We have a little bit of work to do on the non-nine-one calls with the general number and, and but we'll continue to work through that as well.
Chief, thanks for bringing that up. I wish we could get those numbers readily available, you know, the non-nine-one-one. Just so that, yeah, a lot of people call me and say, hey, how, you know, who do I call? Because if it's not, nine-one-one's really easy. But it's the non-emergency numbers that they kind of have to do a little bit of checking into to see where to call that number.
That's a good statement and there's also a question there because there were two numbers, there are eight oh one, eight four zero, four thousand. And then the traditional county number, the seven four three, seven thousand number each go to the same place. They're trying to do away with the county seven four three, seven thousand number. I think that's an error because that's been around for decades and is on many refrigerator magnets and so forth. I don't know that I quite support that yet. To your other point, we have had magnets and different things made up. I wonder if it would be helpful if I, I'm happy to invest in you know, a met fridge magnet or some other information that people can get that they can, or stickers they can put on their phone or their fridge to call on the non-emergency number. But at the end of the day, if they're that nervous and concerned, my recommendation would be that they dial nine-one-one and will respond.
No, I think it's worth, I know at, at the rec center I had that stuck right on my phone, the non-emergency number and use it daily. But maybe Tim, it would be a good idea in our newsletter to educate the public again of those two numbers so that we don't jeopardize our response times on emergency calls. So.
Hey, Dan, can we back up to the slide on the number of citations? It seemed like we had almost three hundred and it was related to Nantucket.
Well, no, that's not, Nantucket is, I'm sure that not all Nantucket, but it's just.
But that was kind of the reason for the boost.
Yeah.
It sounds like a design issue, like maybe we as a city need to change something out there. I'm just thinking of a close to three hundred high school kids being traumatized by their first citation. Is there something we can fix to make that?
And I would, I would dare say we're not even close to three hundred citations to high school students. I mean, that's, you know, I would say yes, some of those, the difference between that one eighty and two hundred and sixty or some, are high school kids, but not all those are going to be high school kids. I did a lot of traffic enforcement when I was a patrol officer. I tell you more time than not, it's usually the parents that are the, the speeders than the, the kids. So.
But is there something design issue wise that we can fix to?
I think that would probably be something for, for Matt and his.
Yeah. Yeah, if I may, there's been a lot of issues, especially in the last several weeks regarding Nantucket and that.
Well, Nantucket and surrounding accidents.
Yeah, and we've had, we've had a number of, of concerned individuals, especially one that's really concerned, that really wants to see enforcement. We, we've done that. There are elements that we have looked at on Nantucket as far as design. There's some things in place, but there are other things that we'll have to look at in the future as well.
We, we, we have a traffic calming program that addresses a lot of those. We have addressed it two or three times directly in the past.
But this, this one resident that we're referring to, he's reviewed the traffic calming manual and doesn't feel that anything in there meets his need. He feels it's, it's more related to enforcement. But, and I think that's why I appreciated working with Tim and Robbie's to having some level enforcement based upon not that one resident and a couple of his neighbors that I talked to. And that's just one area and I think it's, it's, it's education. Maybe that's what Dallas referring to, education. And sometimes, you know, in District Three, previously we found sometimes it's just literally types of striping has a traffic calming measure, but yet it's not a, and those fog lines or printed speeds on the ground or a few of those things that we can still evaluate.
Right. And, and Nantucket was the first place we implemented that.
We implemented the
the striping and the, and that type of thing. It was, it was there and it was on Park Ridge.
We have that on Nantucket.
Yeah.
We have printed, printed speed limits and things on the road and no texting and.
No, that one, that one I've committed, but the first place we tried the fog lines and that was, that was there.
Eight or so years ago, the fog lines were installed and.
Yeah, and we did it over on, we did it over on the bump street as well. Yeah. But anyway, I think what I'm hearing is just continue to look at all those options and enforcement, traffic calming that, that, that we can see is valuable and yeah.
Yep. I'm sure we want to address those concerns as much as possible. So, thank you.
Well, I will tell you, as long as the weather's good, we have our motors that are out there doing a lot of enforcement and they're very effective. Except with the high school students who are more savvy than adults and put out a group text the first time they see the officers there and so that is right, we catch more of their parents than we do actual kids going to high school.
It's, it's part of the issue and just showing a presence and that's why I appreciate the warnings in there as well. So, yeah.
Well, and, and the high school area, especially going down to there and down Oak Creek or Willow Creek area is going to be very, it's going to be a little unusual the rest of the last half of this year. Once they get this parking lot done and before the roundabout gets completed, there's traffic patterns are going to be a little strange and a little and so hopefully, you know, that will just, that will pass when school, it's out in, in May and get better next year.
Maybe what we confront the roundabout, we can do a lot of education.
Yeah.
Warnings and coaching.
We love to give warnings.
Yep. Well, we appreciate Councilmember Bracken in his district being sensitive to those things and our public safety people being sensitive with appropriate enforcement and warnings and look for ways to educate both on numbers to call and working with the school district and our say officers and others to again educate and communicate because that's a big part of it. So we appreciate it. Any final comments, questions? Thank you, Officer Mozuleski.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on our agenda, we have, it looks like four action items. The first item is consideration of ordinance three sixty-nine approving an amendment as presented tonight to the twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two budget. Any comments or questions regarding ordinance three sixty-nine?
I know we had a adjustment in there for police salary. Where does that put us in the state rankings? We top three in pay, in terms of pay.
As far as the yeah, in the valley, which is what we've done the comparisons to, it's in the top three with that.
One or two?
Depends on which type of officer with lieutenants or versus regular officers or sergeants. It fluctuates between two and three. Not, not one, no. Top three though.
And I understand we've had two additional cities that have well, one additional city as well as UPD that's moving forward as well.
Yeah, UPD, just from some of the conversations I had at the league last week with some of the mayors and, and others, yes, they're moving forward. So.
Appreciate that. And of course, my position in, in support of this is again, looking at public safety, both fire and police with a standard that we've kind of set with fire of being in the top three. And I think that continuity or consistency in support of public safety is, is, is good policy. So.
We would be remiss though, if we didn't remember the fourth firefighter that we eliminated.
Yeah.
We, we should work up bringing that.
I, I think absolutely. The fourth firefighter at Station one sixteen is something that we'd love to get back and hopefully that happens. And I, I sure concur and hopefully they'll put that on the list next year to consider. Any further questions, comments on ordinance three sixty-nine?
No, I appreciate the work that Scott and Tim have put in to doing this. Change we saw on the, on the local area with officers pay valley wide. I think that, that, that's, that's, that's well deserved. It was unexpected, but I'm glad that we have a a, a position in our budget where we're able to absorb that with the extra sales tax revenue that we had not anticipated. I would move that we approve ordinance three sixty-nine.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Bracken. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Been seconded by Councilmember Peterson. Any further questions, comments? You know, I call for the vote, Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. And Councilmember Michael is excused. The next item is resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-eight consenting to an appointment to our Parks, Trails and Open Space Committee of Laut Larry Alzurda. Tim, you want to introduce? of Laut Larry Alzurda. Tim, you want to introduce that subject?
Yes, we, we have an opening. Mike Johnson, I had the opportunity to meet with Larry and interview him, talk about his background, his desire and interest to serve on this committee. He has a great experience, particularly as a water resource engineer and has a great can probably provide great insight in an area that would be very helpful for the Parks, Trails and Open Space Committee. So I'm recommending that he be confirmed with this, with this resolution.
Parks, Trails and Open Space does have a couple of positions that are district based. Is that correct?
Was your question?
No. Not formally. We try to make sure it's, sorry, I'm over here. We try to make sure it's spread out evenly across all the districts, but it's not a strict requirement.
But I guess good point that when we do look at replays, we try to make sure we have good representation, both geographically as well as skill set and interests so that we have a good cross section. Yeah. I think it's a fifteen-member committee, right?
Mayor, I would just comment on the caliber of volunteers that we have on our different committees. Some really phenomenal assets to the city and Larry's resume was spectacular.
Thank you. I, I sure agree with that. Any further comments, suggestions, questions? You know, to entertain a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-eight.
So moved.
Been moved by Councilmember Bruce. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Peterson. Any further comments, questions? You know, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilperson Peterson.
Yes.
Councilor Bruce.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. And Councilmember Michael is excused. Next item is resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-nine authorizing issuance of, and sell of not more than fourteen point five million of sales tax revenue refunding bonds. And we've talked about this in our work session. And it's taking the bonding that paid for this building and refunding those and reissuing those at a lower rate and saving us about seventy-five thousand plus dollars per year. Tim, do we want somebody to introduce that or is this, we've discussed that enough as a council? Any questions?
Yeah, if you have questions, we, we have Mark Anderson here with Zion's and Scott can address any questions.
Any questions, concerns from the council? I know we went through this and our financial advisors, Zion's Bank, we met with them a couple of weeks ago and went through it in detail and looked at the opportunity. The other thing that's important about this, even if we do this now and save that money annually, if another opportunity presents itself again in the future, we have the right to do it again. Correct, Mark? Yep. So it isn't locking our hands off.
And Mark, kudos to Zion's for Utah's ethical leadership award. Nicely done.
I, I do have one question. I hope if, if it's too complex, then tell me, you'll talk to me after, but one comment was made that, why don't we just take the money and pay it off? Pay off principal early. Does that work with these types of bonds or is that not something that you that just not a way you handle it? Because they all have different due dates. Is that correct?
You could structure it to where the bond paid off, say a year sooner and had higher principal payments throughout the, the life of the bond.
And that would be in this configuration that we're currently voting on now.
The way it's configured right now is it replicates the existing terms of the two bonds that are being refunded, but you could take some of those savings and shorten the life of it and increase the principal payments.
Once this is done, we can't then kind of go change that term later unless we refunded them and we did, reissued. Is that correct?
Not really. You could, you could make additional principal payments. You have the right to pay the bonds, call the bonds it partial or in whole. But when you call them in a partial redemption, the structure that we have with the Bank of Utah requires you to pay off the bond that matures next. And if you look at the structure of the coupons or the interest rates for each maturity, they increase based on the, the, the term. So it unfortunately pays off the lowest interest rates based on the call feature, but it's callable in whole at any time, which is a real benefit to the city to have that flexibility if there are other opportunities in the future. If there, if advanced refunding becomes available again, that would be probably the most likely scenario that you could create some additional savings.
One other quick question while I've got you here. So we have, we've locked in right now to rate, right? We know that it's gone up a little bit since we've locked. Is that right?
That's correct. And if you looked at the treasury rates today, they went up another five points, five basis points on the ten-year treasury. But they, they go up and down, but the market seems to be thinking that interest rates are going to be going up. Bank stocks have been increasing because they think their, their profits are going to increase with increasing interest rates.
And then just one other clarification. So we have thirty days. Is that right? How many days do we have to complete the transaction? And we should be fine within that window, it sounds like.
You know, I think Scott has the calendar events that I've prepared that can outline what that process looks like.
It's right up there.
So we, we
Okay, thirty days.
We gave notice of the intent to lock the interest rate on September twenty-seventh. And the intent is to close the bonds on October twenty-seventh. Assuming the council adopts the parameters resolution as presented tonight.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mark, one more question. Assuming that our federal government doesn't fund its operations by October eighteenth and interest rates go through the roof. Are we locked in before October eighteenth?
Correct. The, the one thing that I've been talking with your staff about today is typically you would fund the escrow for the bonds that are not yet callable through the purchase of state and local government securities. But because the federal government has not increased the debt limit, they're currently not offering state and local government securities as something that's available for purchase. So now we're looking for open market securities and we've, and we anticipate locking in those rates on the twelfth of October. So we wanted to stay away from any volatility that might exist as we get closer to that October eighteenth deadline.
Awesome. Thank you.
I think it's important to note too, that we're not extending the length of our debt. It's just refinancing basically. Any further comments, questions regarding resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-nine?
Believe my Facebook kept bringing kept bringing up that, I think it was five years ago that we moved into this building. I would move that we approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-nine.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Bracken. Do I have a second?
Second that.
It's been seconded by Councilmember Bruce. Any further comments, questions? And then I'll call for the vote. Councilor Bruce.
Yes.
Councilor Bracken.
Yes.
Councilperson Peterson.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. And Councilor Michael is excused. The next item is resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifty approving and ratifying a bid and awarding a construction contract for Ferguson Park Landscaping Project that's on Wasatch Boulevard, just north of Bengal as they intersect. And I understand this came in underbid slightly. So Matt or Tim, any comments or any questions from the council?
I, I don't have any. We've kind of covered it.
Yeah, I think you talked about it on your report as well. So it's moving ahead rapidly and we have a a contract with Sully County to make this happen as part of a property acquisition many years ago. So any further questions, comments from the council? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilor Bruce. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilperson Peterson. Any final comments, questions? You know, I'll.
It's a long cry from the Walker office.
Yeah, and what Scott's referring to, originally it was proposed to be some office buildings on Wasatch and we worked to diligently to change it to open space. So.
And the dogs of the community are super excited.
Off-leash area.
I'm excited to have the people up on the roads going up to the Ferguson Canyon for those cars to have a place.
Without having to park next.
Narrowing that street down to a very small lane.
We call this a win-win all the way around. All right. Thank you. I'll call for the vote. Councilor Bracken.
Yes.
Councilperson Peterson.
Yes.
Councilor Bruce.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. And Councilor Michael is excused. Okay, the last item of business is approval of the city council work session and business meeting minutes for September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. Intertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I move that we approve twenty twenty-one fifty.
It's been moved by Councilmember Peterson. Do I have a second? It's been seconded by Councilmember Bracken. Any further questions, comments?
I had a quick comment, Mayor. We included in these minutes are two public comments derogatory towards me in nature. And we have a city policy that all public comments be identified and both of those comments are not identified by a name. And so I just wanted that in the record.
No, I, I, I think that's important to have in the record. It's my understanding, it's, it's not a policy, but I understand it's something we strongly request and ask for because we were in the training, Shane, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Years ago that we were told that we can't require that they give their name or require that they give an address.
Yes, it's best not to get an address from folks because that's private information. Typically we try to get names here. I don't know why the names weren't provided, whether it was a technical issue or, or what, but.
But I, yeah.
I would dare say that if they were derogatory towards someone else, they probably wouldn't be included in the minutes.
But I think your comments, it's, it's well documented that, and we need to do a better job. And when I'm here, I should. If they don't state their name, I should ask them if you please state your name. So thank you for that. It's been moved by Councilmember Bracken, seconded by Councilperson Peterson for approval of the minutes with the note of two individuals not identifying their self, which is against our guidelines. Okay, I'll call for the vote then. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I am opposed.
Okay, let the record show that we have three aye and one opposed by Councilmember Bruce. Thank you. All right, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been moved. We adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.